Would someone like to make a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session, please? Mrs. Van Seis, is there a second? Bornstein, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I'd like to call the regular board meeting to order. All board members are present. Dr. Vannater, would you like to recite the Pledge of Allegiance for us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be advised that in the event of a fire emergency and an evacuation should be necessary, an alarm will sound. Please note all marked emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time, we request that everyone turn their cell phones and other electronic devices to their silent mode, if you would, please. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Mrs. Van Seis, second. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Dr. Marslaw, board recognition tonight, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Again, tonight, we are honored to recognize another everyday hero in our ranks, whose quick thinking and courageous response to a serious situation saved a student's life. Angela Dunn is a part-time teacher's aide at Mill Middle School, and Mill Principal Mike Klandra is here to tell us a story about how Angela sprang into action during the eighth grade lunch period on March 27th, when she realized a student was experiencing a life-threatening situation. Mr. Klandra?
Thank you, Dr. Marslaw. Well, let me start first, before I talk about the story of when it all began with Angela Dunn. I was looking back and we were talking, she came to Mill in 2005, so she's, 14 years she's been at Mill. She is the consummate professional. She, her attendance is stellar, which sometimes you don't see today. She makes connections with our students, and in this particular case, made a real connection with a student. And she is very, very flexible with our support staff. Each and every day is different. They maybe assign certain students, a certain study hall, but sometimes with shortages, Angela always steps up and will actually come to the main office and say, "Is there anything else I can do to help the functioning of the day?" And again, we can count on her no matter what is needed. She's also able to think on her feet, as Dr. Marslaw stated, which serves us extremely well, and obviously, this student who was choking. I want to thank you all for, thank Angela for recognizing that a student was in distress and helping out so quickly. It's truly a pleasure to work with her every day. So, I was actually in an observation, and I came back to the office and the secretary said, "Have you seen Angela?" And I said, "No." "What's the matter?" "Well, she saved a student's life." And I'm like, "Would she save a student's life? What do you mean by that?" "Well, he was choking, and he had actually had a gummy bear that he was chewing on, and Angela and another teacher aide saw him, and he actually approached them. And she asked him specifically, "Are you choking?" And he gave the signal, and she then proceeded to perform the Heimlich twice. The first time it didn't come out, and the second time ejected out onto the floor. So, the student was taken to the nurse and checked out, and everything was good. Parents were contacted, and he went back to class. So, I just want to congratulate Angela on a great act, but also just the day-to-day that you provide to all of our students and staff at Mill Middle School.
I just would like to say of my training from Mill Middle School, Jody Dracy, she's, I work with one student in a wheelchair that anytime was choking, how to do it. And she always trains us, anything, Mr. Klandra, if we need something, ask, he provides it for us. I'm just glad I was there to help any student. It's just heartwarming, you know, that he came to me. You know, anybody else? And I always just tell kids, "Be careful, what should you want?" You know, like a fruit snag, gummy thing? It just scares me now. Every time I see one, I have flashbacks, but, you know. But other than that, thank you, and I enjoy working for the school district.
North High School, who recently achieved a perfect score on the ACT exam, a standardized test used for college admissions. Here to tell us more and to introduce this exceptional student is North Principal Andre Thomas.
So, I'm here to congratulate Pranav Settler on earning a perfect score on the ACT assessment. This achievement is very significant and rare. Only around two-tenths of 1% of all test takers earn the top score. Among U.S. high school graduates in the class of 2018, just 3,741 out of more than 1.9 million students who took the ACT earned this perfect score. So, once again, we are very proud of Pranav on this amazing accomplishment.
Williamsville's music program is second to none. Our talented and dedicated teachers are passionate about music and are passionate about working with students to help them become the very best they can be. Again, this year, Williamsville has received the Best Communities for Music Education Award, a national designation that our district has earned for 11 consecutive years. Michael Russo, Instructional Specialist for Fine Arts, is here to tell us more about this noteworthy achievement.
Thank you, Dr. Marslaw, and good evening, everyone. It's an honor to, once again, be selected as the Best Community for Music Education. I'm going to, I'm going to take this opportunity to focus on one component of the criteria behind this and weave it into a recognition we're going to be doing as well. In the criteria for Best Communities for Music Education, they talk about community opportunities for music, and things to play in, things to listen to. Given that we're going to be recognizing Matt Cohen tonight for his accomplishments as receiving the Amherst Symphony and Williamsville Rotary Club 2019 scholarship, it's perfect timing to recognize one of those community components we are so fortunate to have. The Amherst Symphony Orchestra was founded 73 years ago, and with me tonight is their general manager, Joan Fishburne, who herself was just recognized this weekend, as she's been performing in the Amherst Symphony for 60 years, which is fantastic. The Amherst Symphony is a treasure, is an opportunity for our entire community. Many of our students and teachers have played or currently play with the Amherst Symphony. Most areas of the country would be thrilled to have a single community orchestra for them to play in. We're so fortunate in the greater Western New York area. If you want to play in the Amherst Symphony, you can. If you need more, then you could head down the road to Cheek to Waga and play in the Cheek to Waga Symphony, and then keep on going to Orchard Park and play in Orchard Park. So, we're truly fortunate for our arts, arts community to share just a little bit, a very brief bit about the Amherst Symphony and its history. I'd ask Joan to share her story with you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to be here. I don't know how I could have played for 60 years since I'm only 35. I wanted to share with you how that all started. When I moved here, when we moved here in 1959, I had been a teacher in Pennsylvania. I had two small children, and I wanted to play. So, I called Williamsville South High School and asked, "Is there a music, is there someone to whom I could speak and ask a question?" And it was a Mr. Jalinski. I'm sure no one remembers him, but he was very kind to me, and he said, "Oh, yes, we have a community symphony. It actually rehearses right here at Williamsville South, and it's just across the street from where we had rented as we had first moved. We rented on Highland Drive. Went across the street, was introduced to Dr. Winzens, and the rest is history." So, we rehearsed, the orchestra rehearsed in Williamsville, at Williamsville South, as well as Amherst Middle School, which is our home at this point. And I brought, just to show you, this is the very first program that we had in 1946, which was the, it was founded by Dr. Winzens, and he was the conductor for 50 years. And it was set, it was a parent-teacher association that brought that, that allowed the orchestra to get started. So, the Amherst Symphony Orchestra not only produces music, but we're in the education world and business as well. So, we go to the schools here in all of Amherst and reach out beyond that, basically, to introduce children to various instruments. And the, a number of the musicians will go and present not just their own instruments, but tell a little bit about what their occupation is. And we suggest to the children that very few of them will ever end up in the Buffalo Philharmonic or be a professional musician, but we're so grateful that we, in the orchestra, are able to continue to play as our avocation and our passion, and hope that they will take up their instruments and enjoy music all through their lives as we do.
Thank you, Joan. And so, it's clear, our community, it's, it's, it's in the water, it's in everything, what the arts are and what music is in our community. And the Amherst Symphony is a major contributor to this. Another way the Amherst Symphony contributes is through the Friends of the Amherst Symphony Orchestra and Williamsville Rotary Club Scholarship Program. Since 1990, these organizations have combined to present a scholarship to a local high school senior entering college with the intent of majoring or double majoring in music. This year, Williamsville East Senior, Matt Cohen, has received this honor. Matt just got back from performing with the All Eastern United States High School Symphony Orchestra in Pittsburgh over the weekend. He's a little tired from a pretty, pretty intense four days of rehearsals. Matt, among many things, his resume is very extensive, he's been the Concert Master of the Greater Buffalo Youth Orchestra for two years, where he also won the Senior Concerto Competition this year. He was Concert Master of the All-State Symphony Orchestra this year, and the Concert Master of the All-State String Orchestra last year. A musical feature is in store for Matt, as his college search includes all the top music schools, and he's in the middle of negotiations right now, so more to come soon on where he's, he's going to end up. Matt is someone we will be reading about and listening to for years to come. Please join me in congratulating Matt Cohen on receiving the Friends of the Amherst Symphony Orchestra Williamsville Rotary Club Scholarship.
No? Okay. Mrs. Beaker, would you please read the board's public expression statement?
Sure. Welcome to all who have come to observe this regular board meeting. Per Policy 1510, the board has set aside 30 minutes for public expression, a time when we invite members of the community to share ideas and concerns with us. We welcome this opportunity to hear from you. Each person is given up to three minutes in which to address the board. You will be signaled with a yellow flag at two and a half minutes so that you may conclude your remarks. This is a meeting held in public rather than a public meeting, which means we will not be engaging in dialogue with members of the community this evening. Rest assured, we are listening carefully, and we take seriously what you have to say. I would also like to ask that you demonstrate respect for us and for one another by speaking to the issues, giving us ideas, sharing your opinions, but not engaging in personal attack. Thank you for your cooperation, and we do not have anyone signed up for our first public expression unless someone wanted to come to the microphone now and sign in. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda items, seven personnel, eight business, and nine special needs and students' activities as presented, please? Mr. Bornstein, is there a second? Mrs. Beaker, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. I would like to thank the following retirees for their service to the district. Deborah Shaw from Transit Middle, part-time teacher's aide for seven years, seven months of service. And a correction from last month, Mr. Stephen Breleg. I'm sorry, Bre, I did it again, I did it again. Mr. Stephen Bre, Bree Zee from North High School, science teacher for 33 years of service. My apologies, thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular board meeting held on March 12th, 2019? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, second. Mrs. Van Seis, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries 801. Would someone like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the budget work session for March 26th, 2019? Dr. Vannater, is there a second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. President's Report. 16th Annual Safe Schools Initiative Seminar at the University of Buffalo was held on March 21st, 2019. Dr. McClary attended this event. Dr. McClary, can you give us a brief update on the, on the event, if you would, please?
Yes, thank you. As stated, this was the 16th year in which this seminar was held. It was at the university, and there were, I believe, 1,300 people in attendance from various educational communities and law enforcement. The program began with a special agent who gave a presentation on potential threats to schools and students who may be exhibiting concerning behaviors, and then they talked about how to develop risk management strategies to work with those individuals. Then there was a panel where they walked through, almost like a case study of saying, "Here's a particular student, this happened, what would you do? How would you handle that?", and so forth. And listening to those interventions and possible ways of handling situations were very informative. And the final section was a personal overview of the events from Columbine High School, presented by the gentleman who was the principal at that time. Needless to say, that was, I don't know what the right word is to describe, I can't say it was interesting because it was very emotional, but I'm glad that I had the opportunity to hear some specific details about all that's involved or all that might happen as a result of a school tragedy. So, I'm glad that I had the opportunity to go, and I'm looking forward to going again next year. Any questions?
Great, thank you. Get to know your BOSEs from Erie County Association of School Boards. It was an open house at Erie One Harkness Center. This occurred on March 21st, 2019. Myself and Mr. Mecca attended this event. Mr. Tam, Mr. Mecca, would you give us a brief update, please?
Sure. I was happy to get to tour the spaces that our children learn in at BOSEs. We were rotating through three of the different vocations. Me and Mr. Lemay had one in common, I think, but two different ones. I went to the auto body vocational shop, and I went to the electrical shop, and the culinary kitchen. So, it was really just a great experience to see the, meet the teachers that are working with our children and see the spaces that they're working in. Mr. Lemay, which sessions did you attend?
Well, thank you for asking. I attended the, I stayed with the trades primarily. I stayed with the electrical and the general trade, which I was actually very impressed to see that over a two-year period, they build a full house from, from start to finish, that they turn around and auction off in the back parking lot every year. It's a two-year project, but they actually complete the house every year. They start educating indoors, kind of with little shacks and stuff like that, that the students build in their first year to get an understanding of foundations and stuff like that, and then they move on the second year, actually going into building the house. And the auction pays for the materials so that they can continue the program at no cost to any of the districts. But the thing I thought the most about the tour, I've never stepped foot in, in the Harkness Center before, is the wealth of programs that are offered. I mean, not just trades, I mean, we saw culinary and, you know, electrical skills. I went into video and audio production for marketing purposes and stuff like that, but they, you know, even at the Harkness Center, they offer pilot's licenses. You know, if you want to get a career in being a pilot, they'll help you, you know, get your pilot's license, you know, in a affiliation with the Buffalo Niagara International Airport. So, I was really impressed at the full scope of what, what they offer there, and it's a very large and impressive facility. Thank you, Mr. Mecca. Coming up here in the near future, we have the Delegate Assembly Meeting. That'll be at Erie One BOSEs Room B2B, 355 Harlem Road, West Seneca, New York. That's occurring on Thursday, April the 11th, 2019, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. I have down here Dr. McClary is attending. The Scholastic Achievement Recognition Dinner, the, or abbreviated S-A-R-D, will be handled at Salvatoras Transit Road, 6461 Transit Road in DePew. That will be Thursday, May 16th, 2019, at 6:15 p.m. I have down here Mrs. Leatherbarrow attending that. The Erie County Association of School Boards Annual Dinner will occur at Salvatoras, also on Transit Road, Thursday, June 6th, 2019. Start time on that is 5:15 p.m. And at this point, are there anybody here that would like to go to this event? Dr. McClary? Gotcha.
What was the date again?
That is Thursday, June the 6th. Anybody else like to attend it? It's a fun evening. This is where they, I believe, they auction off the baskets, and Mr. Mecca, I think, always walks away with like about half of them. Okay, Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Anybody else? I know I'm going to plan on attending this as well, so that's four board members. We'll bring it up again next month, so think about it for those that didn't reply. Should a board candidate become elected? The following are mandatory trainings that need to be fulfilled within the first year of service. And these are trainings that the Erie County Association of School Boards offers. The first one is a new board member six-hour governance training class that will be at the Erie One BOSEs offices in West Seneca. That's Saturday, June the 8th, 2019, from 8:45 a.m. until 3:30 p.m. in the afternoon. The second mandatory training is new board member six-hour fiscal oversight responsibility training, also Erie One BOSEs, West Seneca, New York, Saturday, June the 15th, from 8:45 until 3:30 p.m. One last item that missed the agenda here, last Thursday, I believe it was, there was this legislative committee meeting. Mr. Mecca normally is at attendance, I believe Dr. McClary filled in, and this was also handled or occurred at the Erie One BOSEs offices in West Seneca. Dr. McClary, could you give us just a very quick update on what occurred there?
Basically, because it is a legislative committee, we spent most of the time there talking about different things that would impact our area districts based on the new governor's state budget.
Great, thank you. Does anyone have anything else to share under the Erie County Association of School Boards? Okay, moving under, on to New York State School Board Association. They also have a program for mandatory training that needs to be fulfilled for student board candidates. Now, this isn't either/or. You don't have to take this and also take the two classes I mentioned previously. This one is the 2019 Policy Workshop. It occurs, this is an all-day, no, you know what? I got this backwards. Sorry, their workshop, you know what? I am, I've got this backwards. Let me, let me continue with that. Their workshop is the 2019 School Board Member Academy in Niagara Falls. That is August 23rd, 24th, 2019, located at the Sheridan, 303rd Street, Niagara Falls, New York. And again, that's a two-day event to get those two mandatory trainings. So, you can either go to the, the New York State School Board Training, over two days, back-to-back, or you can do the two from Erie County Association of School Boards, which is just two Saturdays in a row. The New York State School Board Association also has a 2019 Policy Workshop coming up. This is occurring on Wednesday, April the 17th, from 8:00 a.m. until 12:30 p.m. This will be located at the Holiday Inn Buffalo International Airport, 4600 Genesee Street, Cheek to Waga, New York. The cost for any NISBA members, board members to attend is $175. Is anybody here interested in attending this workshop? Nope? Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have anything to report under the New York State School Board Association? Thank you. The board retreat was held last Sat, or two Saturdays ago, March 30th, 2019, here in the District Board Office, our boardroom. The NISBA representative facilitated this retreat. Let's see, Mr. Bornstein, can you give us a summary of the event, please?
Sure. Thank you. I'm just going to read from my notes here. On Saturday, March 30th, the Board of Education convened a retreat focused on goal-setting for the district and for the board. Its attendants were all the members of the Board of Education and the administrative leadership team. The retreat was facilitated by Cheryl Keller, an adjunct for the New York State School Board Association, providing professional development to New York State School Boards, and also attended by Ms. Dear Cole, the Director of Leadership Development at the, at NISBA. The main focus of the retreat was to ensure that all members shared a vision for goal-setting. This required a detailed discussion on mission statements and core beliefs. The current mission and vision statements are both available at the district's website, Determining best practices for effective leadership, understanding the roles and responsibilities of the entire leadership group, and establishing exceptional board governance practices were all discussed. Ms. Keller suggested an important tool is the SWOT analysis, strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. I'm happy to report that the Williamsville Central School Districts has many strengths, but it was interesting determining the weaknesses, the opportunities, and the threats, and applying that understanding to our planning in the future. One of my favorite parts of the retreat was something called personal introductions, where we went around the table and shared a bit about our personal lives. Now, you might think that every, all of us up here know each other pretty well. Turns out, there's so much more to know. Everyone has an interesting life outside of being on the Board of Education. Understanding that was very useful in cementing our working relationships on behalf of the work that we do for the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bornstein.
Thank you, Mr. Bornstein. Board member terms will end on June 30th, 2019, for the following board members, Mary Beeger, Teresa Leatherbarrow, and Suzanne Van Seis. At this time, the three incumbents, Mary Beeger, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, and Suzanne Van Seis, have completed and turned in their board packets. Mrs. Carey, do you have any other new candidates or any other information to add?
I do, yes. Just an additional candidate has turned in his petitions and it's Mr. Swarup Singh. We did receive those on Tuesday, March 19th. And just a couple reminders for items that are due, April 22nd. If you are, if you have petitions, they are due on the 22nd. PTA Council Questionnaire is also due on the 22nd and your first expense statement is also due on that date. And that's all for now.
Great, thank you. The annual Erie One BOSIs meeting will be held on Wednesday, April 10th, 2019, at 6:00 p.m. at the Erie One BOSIs offices in West Seneca. They will be presenting their tentative admission, administrative capital and program budgets for the 2019-2020 academic school year. The community forum was held this past Saturday, April the 6th, at the Williamsville North High School Cafeteria. Dr. Renater, could you give us an update on the occurrence of that morning, please?
Certainly, Mr. Lemay. Thank you. We had a very enjoyable and productive community forum this past Saturday at North High School. We ran it from 9:00 a.m. for a few hours. We had roughly about 25 folks, including all attendees. As a refresher to folks in the audience, the community forum is a way to enhance transparency and communication between stakeholders in the district, the Board of Education, and the administration. I think the two seminal topics that we discussed, at least spent the most time on, first was gifted and talented programming here in the Williamsville Schools. We had a very robust and helpful discussion around that. A variety of ideas were exchanged. In attendance, we had a number of community members, parents. We also had a number of teachers. We had two principals in attendance, along with other constituents. So it was a very healthy and informative dialogue. The second topic that we covered was the concept or the idea of potentially having later start times for high schools based on recommendations that are coming forward from medical professionals such as the American Medical Association, starting past 8:30 due to biological and physiological effects in high schoolers. That was also a very productive discussion as well. And then we closed the meeting with the leadership of the board asking if two meetings, three meetings a year is appropriate, if this type of forum is helpful. Again, all in the spirit of increasing transparency and communication with the district. So all in all, I think it was very productive and we actually received some very kind comments from folks in the audience, which was nice.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Renater. The exit survey budget vote, exit poll, you all in your packet received the information in the exit survey draft for review. Any comments or questions on that? If not, I'm assuming this will probably go in front of the voters as a, as an exit survey this year. Mrs. Van Seis?
I would just like to say thank you to Mrs. Carey. The exit summary that you put forth to us looks perfect. One page, easily readable, I believe, just the effort and the time that you've put in so far. I think it will be, it will prove to be very beneficial to us as well with the questions that you chose. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion? Mr. Mecca?
I think it's good that there's a comment section at the end as well.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Carey, and all that helped put that together for you. Upcoming Board of Education School visits. I have down, let's see here, Maple East is coming up next Monday, April the 15th, 7:30 a.m. I show Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Dr. McClary, and myself, all in attendance. Anybody else wish to join the merry crew here? Okay. Friday, May the 3rd, 8:00 a.m. at High Middle. This is the rescheduled one from, originally from February 1st. I've got Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Mr. Bornstein, and again, myself. Anybody else wish to join on this one?
Which one is that?
This is May, Friday, May 3rd, 8:00 a.m., High Middle. The one prior to that was April 15th at 7:30.
I apologize.
Okay. Next one is Friday, May 10th, 8:00 a.m., Country Parkway Elementary School. I have myself, Mrs. Leatherbarrow, and a maybe beside Mrs. Van Seis. You can do that confirmed? Okay, we'll remove the maybe. Thank you. Anyone else want to join us on that morning? And the last one, before our next formal meeting, will be Monday, May the 20th, 7:30 a.m., Dodge Elementary. This is Mrs. Leatherbarrow, Dr. McClary, Mrs. Beeger, and myself. Mrs. Van Seis, you think you can add to that? I'll put you down as a maybe, if you'd be so kind and let the district clerk know when you can confirm on that. And the last thing I just wanted to add under President's Report is more of an FYI to report that the four board member, member, four board, the board committee made up of four members is meeting with the WTA Executive Session that will occur on May the 8th. And that is going to occur in our, I believe we call it the HR Conference Room, and that will be at 6:00 p.m. And that is all I have under the President's Report this month. So, moving on to Dr. Martzloff and your community update, please.
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. Happy to report, we had an excellent group of meetings last week with our consultants from PLC Associates who came to the district to talk about long-term strategic planning. And they met for a couple of hours with the leadership team, talking about the process of how this would work. And then we had a similar meeting with all of our principals in the district and gave our principals a chance to ask questions and get things clarified for how the process will take place. And then lastly, we had a meeting with a group of teachers from the WTA Executive Committee to again, talk about long-term strategic planning and answer questions there. Our next steps will be to form a core team of individuals from around the district, probably 40 or more people from around the district. I did consult with the consultants about the opportunity for a school board member to be on that core team, and they said that they felt that would be a positive idea. So, not that I want to give any board member more meetings to go to, because these will be a number of full-day meetings that take place, particularly as we get into next school year. But it is an open invitation for the board to make a determination if someone from the board wants to take part in that planning process.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
I will ponder that for people to think about. I don't, I, we'll ask next month if anybody actually wants to volunteer for that, since Dr. Martzloff did state that that's probably full-day meetings, so. Mr. Mecca?
Can we volunteer other people? From ourselves?
Oh, this is a board representative. You're going to volunteer another board member? Any other questions? Okay, we'll move on here. Dr. Martzloff, do you have an update you can give us, please, on the district technology implementation?
Yes, at this time, I'll turn it over to Mr. Maturski, who will introduce our guests, and we'll get started with our presentation. Mr. Maturski?
Thank you, Dr. Martzloff. At this time, I'd like to introduce the members of our team. You have Dr. Baylen, Mr. Skanzuzo, and Mr. Lee Ferenc. Dr. Baylen is going to begin the presentation, so I'm going to turn it over from her to her at this time.
Dr. Baylen, if you don't mind, can you share with the board Mr. Ferenc's position in the district? The board might not be familiar.
Thank you, yes, Dr. Martzloff. Mr. Ferenc, Lee Ferenc is a member of our Technology Integration Team. Lee also serves as the team leader for this area, and he works very closely with us here at district office. His role is actually a blended role. He has an assignment at a school currently, who's serving North High School, and he has many responsibilities related to technology that he assists with at a district level as well. So we welcome Lee joining us this evening. So thank you, Dr. Martzloff and the Board of Education, for the opportunity to present our annual technology update. Today, we will showcase highlights, provide an overview of parent and teacher survey results, and discuss security from a technology perspective. The first portion of the presentation displays students in action, and we will hear directly from teachers at each level of instruction regarding technology integration. We wish to acknowledge the contribution of our instructional technology team, as well as the teachers and the schools that you will see featured in the presentation. While there is an example featured from each school and videos highlighting one particular school, there are countless ways in which digital tools and resources are being utilized meaningfully by our teachers and our students. We will begin first at the elementary level. From Country Parkway, students using the green screen to be immersed in a digital background, making their scenery come alive and being part of their own creation, to the global Read Alouds at Maple West, where students connect through literature and in discussion with classes and other students across the globe, to what you will see in this video from Dodge, living posters. I had the great pleasure to see students from Mrs. Weber's kindergarten class recently engaged with the posters and video messages created by Dodge's second-grade team. The students did an absolutely wonderful job. Let's listen to Dodge teacher Andrea Mango.
Hi, my name is Andrea Mango, and I'm a second-grade teacher at Dodge Elementary. I do Lucy Cawkins Readers and Writers Workshop in my classroom. And as part of my nonfiction units, I looked at all of the goals and I thought it naturally lent itself to a research project. In Writers Workshop, they wanted kids to choose their own topics, make things interesting in their writer, grab their audience attention, and have a celebration. In Readers Workshop, they wanted them to look across multiple books, compare and contrast the information that they were getting and learning, and use vocab-specific information. So doing those two projects together and making a research project, they ultimately ended up doing a poster, putting all of their information together. Each student made a poster, and the Fun Facts section of the poster served as a trigger for the HP Reveal app. When someone holds the app iPad over the Fun Facts, a video just appears.
I'm Peyton, and I researched all about cupcakes. Now I'm going to tell you some fun facts.
Hi, I'm Sophia, and I'm researching all about Walt Disney. I'm going to tell you.
My students loved that their posters were out for the entire school.
I'm going to tell you some fun facts I learned.
They loved the fact that their video was down here and that all of their friends and all of their family could see them pop out of the poster.
I'm going to tell you some fun facts I learned.
It was definitely engaging and a great way to showcase their learning. Thanks, Bobby.
So now we move on to middle school. So just a few highlights in the middle school section, just to point out. The hyperdoc exploration that occurs at not all our middle schools, but just to highlight the European explorers that happened at Casey Middle School. It's a transformative way and a thoughtful way to package instructional technology material for the students to engage in. I'll also highlight some of the computer science that happens over at our middle schools. In, in specific, I'll take Transit Middle, for instance, who had a variety of activities that occurred at their level, from Aurora Code, Girls Who Can Code, Computer Science Week, and items like that. Here's just a few sample images, you know, from Transit that did happen. In addition, I'm going to let you listen from Kristen, who's a sixth-grade math teacher over at Transit Middle, on her activities.
Greetings from Transit Middle School. My name is Kristen Streit, and I am a sixth-grade math teacher here at Transit. This year, we decided to try something new by introducing Tinker to our math classes. So, to begin with the question of what is Tinker? Tinker is a very user-friendly online platform used to teach students coding. We chose this tool as it's very user-friendly from both the teacher and student end, and it works really well in the Chromebook. From the student perspective, Tinker allows a variety of activities at a variety of levels, allowing the students to practice and discover at their own pace. From the teacher perspective, it works really well with Google Classroom, which allows us to send or push out a variety of activities to the students. Moving beyond the question of what and onto the question of how, we utilized our math time to provide opportunities for enrichment through the use of Tinker. As I previously mentioned, Tinker works well with Google Classroom. What this means is when we're able to push activities out to the students, we were able to choose which activities went to which students, allowing us to differentiate as needed. We found that the range of exposure to coding varied greatly across of our classes. Some students were beginners while others were very proficient. I have to admit that I am on the beginning end of coding myself and was thrilled to find that Tinker had built-in tutorials to help guide those students ready for a bit more challenge. The kids also really enjoyed that independence, allowing them to practice more at home. Ultimately, while the what and how of any student activity is important, I feel as a teacher, the most important question that we need to ask is why. So, why did we choose to use Tinker in our math classes? We chose Tinker, and more generally, coding, to practice trial and error, problem-solving, pattern identification, and some computational thinking. Coding has also proven to help students visualize abstract math concepts while practicing coding. The students are faced with having to organize information or the data that they are given. They then have to utilize that data and break it apart to help them build their code. Having these skills and being able to think in this way will only help the students in math or truly any area of study. Going forward, we hope to find more ways to utilize coding in Tinker, and our next tool to try will be the Edison bots. We hope that the students can connect the two experiences and continue to grow. Thanks.
Now to move on to high school. Just a few things here on the high school level. You'll see the probe phenomena in there, and you also saw that on the middle school level as well. Grades five through 12 have synchronized software and probes that they use for science data collection during their labs. You'll see digital whiteboarding, which is a way to capture student thinking, not only process for writing, but also to record their voice. So as they're problem-solving, this teacher can kind of almost capture their thinking inside their head. And in addition to that, I'm going to highlight the Senior Inquiry Project. And as I move forward here, you'll see a few images from North High, teacher Kristy Carroll. In addition, I'll let you hear from her own words exactly what the students went through and the instructional technology used.
Hi, I'm Kristy Carroll, and I'm a teacher at North High School. I'd like to talk to you about the Senior Inquiry Project and the use of technology used in that project to make it more seamless. The goal of the Senior Inquiry Research Project is to teach seniors the entire research process from start to finish. In addition to research skills, students learn equally important organizational and time-management skills, as well as self-reflection. Instructional technology is infused into this project as a means of making these steps seamless for students. The instructional technology removes barriers to success while allowing students to focus on the skills and objectives being taught. It decreases frustration and opens the door to regular one-on-one conferencing and timely feedback from teachers. I'd like to highlight a few tools that helped streamline this project. The first one is Common Curriculum, which is a lesson planning app. This app allows me to build my lesson planning in a student-friendly format, which benefits students particularly in time management, because the agenda and goals and assignments are all projected on the classroom screen when students walk into class. Then they can access the same tool from Google Classroom on their Chromebooks. As a result, they can actively begin their student-centered instruction from the moment they walk into class. The second one is using Google Docs as a portfolio tool or binder replacement. A portfolio page is handed out in Google Classroom. Students can personalize the page by changing the color and the fonts and creating ownership, and then the page is used to create links to all of their digital assignments in one place. When students meet with teachers individually at weekly checkpoints, or at any time they like assistance, the portfolio page acts as a binder or catch-all with notes, messages, questions, and grades that are initiated by either the student or the teacher, or maybe not the grades, allowing for real-time, authentic feedback. It also provides a platform for organization, especially benefits those who struggle with it. Students can't lose assignments or forget to place them in their binder, and the assignments naturally build upon each other as students progress. Another effective use of technology infused in this project is the Google Forms and Docapender extension. Each student has a feedback document at the top of his or her Google Classroom page for all presentation feedback. While a student is presenting, I fill out a Google Form with my feedback about that student's presentation, and it appears immediately in this Google Doc, and therefore allows them to view it immediately. Students gain valuable insights on their progress because the feedback is both detailed and timely. It also provides for comparison to prior presentation feedback, which helps students easily understand their own growth and improvement, as well as areas they still need to focus on. Finally, students use the Swivel or robot camera during their presentation for video reflection following their presentation. Students receive a video link that provides the opportunity to learn from their presentation based on both the feedback they receive from the teacher as well as their own observation. based on both the feedback they receive from the teacher, as well as their own observations and their knowledge of public speaking after viewing the video. Then students answer a series of questions in a Google Form to help verbalize what they've learned. I review this feedback to assess their growth as well as their understanding of it. The instructional technology infused into this project truly makes these steps seamless for students and makes it a better project overall.
Next, we will review some survey feedback gathered from parents at the middle level as well as grades five through eight core teachers. Our parent survey reflects information previously shared and gathered from parents at this level in March 2017, specific to the middle level program. Response rates and participation rates are reflected on the screen. Parents indicated their feelings with regard to several items, including frequency of device use at home by students, digital citizenship, availability of devices, and home use. At the time, challenges with connectivity and charging or batteries were noted as well. Parents also expressed the need for additional information on high school technology, and as a result, a transition to high school informational document was created and shared with building administrative staff and posted for parents on the WITS IT tab. It is currently still available. You will hear more later in the presentation regarding restrictions and security. Expressed positives included the use of devices for learning, organization, as well as tools for homework.
So this past February, a survey was created for teachers in grades five through eight core area teachers. We had just under 30% participation in the survey, and as you can see, the responses by building, KC Middle, Transit, and High are represented in the slide. So we asked the teachers, what are you asking your students to do at home with the devices? And the breakdown, as you can see there, is reviewing class materials and studying, watching educational-based videos, daily homework assignments, creating and completing project-based learning, internet-based research, creating or continuing learning and lessons learned in class, and engaging in enrichment-based activities. What was also asked is how often are the students required to use these devices outside of the classroom? So basically, as you look there, the breakdown, two to three times per week is a top vote getter, 39%. Daily, about just under 17, and so on and so forth. So I'll pass it over to Mr. Metersky.
Thank you. I'd like to continue on with the network overview. So much of what we do, of course, requires that we are having the appropriate security in place. And we have a lot of different programs. Some are on our mainframe, some come with the software. But we also purchase additional firewall protection from Erie One BOCs, protection for our email system from outside, that's a direct purchase. And we also have some filtering processes that, again, are through Erie One BOCs that look at the types of items being searched on the internet. All of those items are important, and we're continuing to look at how we can improve that every year. As far as updates, anyone who has a computer realizes that every now and then you get a Microsoft update and you might be annoyed that it shuts the system down, but we have to perform those to keep our systems current, and that's why we have Maintenance Thursdays, and we try and maintain that. That's an extremely important item for us here in the district. And last year, we began the process of using a outside firm to do cyber audits. They look at everything from doing social engineering audits, where they look at phishing, and they see how our own staff react to that in a protective mode, so nothing can be damaging to those type of items, as well as looking at our internal systems and how we can better prevent some type of foreign malware attack. Going forward into our network security, as I mentioned, we are always looking to improve and enhance what we have. But one of the main things we've read from the industry standard is that educating users is one of the most important things that we can do, and we're constantly trying to do that. As recent as last week, we've sent out some additional information to all of our users regarding certain threats that were out there. So we continue to do that. Maintaining our recovery, disaster recovery plans, is something that we're always looking at to update and improve. One of the items we always have to balance here is what's the cost part of that, because to do a full update is hundreds of thousands of dollars if you want to put that type of system in place, so we balance that. And again, we want to make sure that, as you may be aware, one of our district goals was to look at our fiber, so we're constantly looking at the condition of that and how that interacts with the instructional program delivery that occurs every day in our classrooms. So another item that is addressed here today is YouTube usage. YouTube is something that we use in our district, and there are many examples we could provide. We chose one, which is Mike Belling, a Physics East teacher. He has a YouTube channel. We don't have a link to it here. We can provide that in the future to you if you're interested, but he provides great content to his students, and it's extremely valuable. We have certainly a collection of other instructional videos that are out there, and there's direct links that are also provided to certain YouTube sites from teachers. So the next question would be, how is that secure? And what we have is, we're a Google School District, so as a result, we have access to the YouTube security programs. We have recently upgraded the elementary status from just the moderated restricted to the highest level, which is a strict access level. And essentially, what this does is YouTube is kind of policing the videos, and they actually will segment those that they feel are inappropriate to these type of grade levels. It also eliminates the comments, which is important from our perspective, and so we feel that that's certainly something that helps us use YouTube and is beneficial for the instructional program. Teachers may find from time to time that they can't access something, and they can just ask us in technology to basically whitelist or allow access to those YouTube channels, which we will do, and then they can use that for their class instruction. So in kind of concluding, the recommendations here for as we go forward in the next year, one of the things I know that was brought up last year at this presentation was what is the status of our one-to-one program? And for the 1920 school year, our plan is to continue it as it is with the one-to-one, having the devices go home. But as we go into that year, we want to look at, again, what's the best piece for our instructional program, and look at the potential movement into a cart-based model at the elementary school. So that's our future direction, and with that, we are all available for questions.
Mr. Bernstein.
Thank you. I use Google a lot, Google Drive, search engine, of course, and email. In order to gain access to all those technologies, I need an account. How are students protected from having to provide account information or having their own accounts when accessing all the Google technologies?
So since we are Google Suite EDU, which is different than a private Gmail account, so our education accounts are created based on our student accounts for Active Directory, so they're synced up. Parents sign permission forms to have those enabled, and currently we're grades one through 12 with Google accounts. What's different about that is there are certain services that are not available to that that are available to you in your Gmail account, example, email. So the kids do not have access to that, and there's plenty of other things that are not available to them that are available to you in a private account.
Sure. And the reason I ask is, I'm a big fan of Google, but I'm a little bit afraid of them as well. So in this system that you have set up, does a company like Google have any access whatsoever to a student's personal information or anything whatsoever that could identify them to Google?
No. According to the agreements that we signed with them, no.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Van Sis.
So Mr. Metersky, thank you for actually answering a question I had. We've heard in the past about the issue that many middle school parents feel like the Chromebook going home, the screen time. I personally don't have an issue. My son uses it for the sole purpose of doing his assignments, puts it away and charges it. It's a routine that he has, and in fact, the firewalls are wonderful. Sometimes it causes frustration because he's like, oh my God, this website I need is blocked. So my question was going to be, is there discussion, though, hearing, you know, the parental voice around going to that one-to-one model? When I say that, I don't mean phones. I mean exactly what you said, which was the cart-based Chromebooks. We do it at the high school, perhaps. I'm glad just to hear that you answered that that is something that you are discussing. That might clear up a lot, I think, with parents. Personally, though, in regards to the instructional technology, I think it's awesome just to hear this presentation again. We just heard a lot about the gifted programming and what things can we do, and we were talking about, we don't have the money right now, we need to look at doing things differently. This is a great example. You can use this instructional technology even for this circumstance because of the enrichment opportunities, even all of the things you touched on. Students learn to strategize, problem-solve, explore. The one-to-one conferencing with immediate teacher feedback that I see with papers is outstanding. For those students that aren't organized, this solves a huge problem, or, you know, it solves a huge problem with organization because you now have Google Classroom where all your papers are kept. I think it's great. I've said before, I like how this district has a nice balance between still doing paper pencil, but using instructional technology for that support and supplemental. And ultimately, we are really promoting lifelong learners to get our students, even at the middle school level, to be college and career-ready, which is our ultimate goal. So thank you for this presentation. I find it beneficial and so excellent to see every year.
Mrs. Lotter-Berl.
Thank you again for this presentation. I especially enjoyed the videos, getting to see each teacher express how they're utilizing the technology. I absolutely support the use of technology for project-based learning. That also promotes cooperative learning, so it's really great to see when that's occurring. I do have a lot of reservations when it's on the screen and nobody's communicating or talking with anyone. So as a parent, and as an educator, I absolutely support the use of the technology in the classroom. When it's being sent home, I do have a lot of conflicts with that. There are times where, speaking practically, we're not in a Wi-Fi area. The children might be having to do their homework in between their dance classes at the dance studio, or perhaps studying or reading a book or doing some of their homework out on the field or at sports practice. So Wi-Fi isn't always available in those situations. My children sometimes do their homework in the car because we're driving here and there. Wi-Fi is not available in our vehicle. I also don't feel that it's fair to put the responsibility on the parent to manage the use of the device that the school sends home. I wouldn't send something dangerous home with one of my students and then expect the parent to make sure that they don't use it in a dangerous way. Not saying that the screen is dangerous, just saying that there's two sides to it. So I am really happy to see that there is going to be some future studying, and the possibility of moving to a cart-based model for middle school is something that I absolutely support in the future.
Other questions? Speaker.
I want to start with a comment and just echo those videos with the teachers at the different levels. What I really enjoy seeing about that is that our teachers are not just teaching technology. They're not just teaching, here's how, you know, here's how I use Google Classroom. They're actually using these tools to teach the content, to teach to the standards, and I love seeing how teachers said this is the goal that I wanted, and here's how I incorporated it to make it really engaging for the kids. So, well done, and thank you for showing us, you know, instead of just telling us, really allowing us to see that in action. It was excellent. As far as the middle school cart, I've also, since March 2017, which was a couple of years ago, our district has shared information. We showed Screenagers, a documentary, and I know, I personally have heard from middle school parents who have concerns as well. So, I mean, even up here, we've got difference of opinions based on our current technology plan regarding sending home one-to-one devices. So I think it's very smart to review this plan, and my question is, will part of this review look similar to the 2017, which I thought was well done? You surveyed parents and teachers and students. Will that review look similar so that we can look to see if there's trends or shifts in that kind of data?
I think we're going to do a holistic review, so it may include another survey at this time. I also think we're going to look at what we've learned since then. A couple of years have gone by. We certainly, we've received some input, as you just saw, from our teachers. So we're going to take all that and review it from our internal group here, and then most likely, we're going to look at specific areas that we feel need to be addressed in more detail. And that's going to be how we're going to be able to understand what the right move is and when that would occur. So we've been talking about this, again, with our group here, and we are looking forward to doing this in a much more detail in the next school year.
Great. Great. Thank you. And just to follow up with that, I think a piece that's helpful, as parents are forming their opinions or sharing their opinions, is just educating parents on exactly what it looks like. Because even in this presentation, that question of, oh, what if my kids can find this, or what, you know, I'm leaving, I remember when my son was in middle school, turning him this way to make sure that when he was doing his homework, we can see his screen. So, you know, he's not playing games and he's supposed to be doing homework, that kind of thing. So to see that there's that security piece is very helpful, because I think that's one of parental concerns is what's happening on those screens at school. There's teachers to monitor them, but to expect parents to monitor students when they should be doing homework independently is something different, so.
Okay.
Thank you for sharing.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Craig, I have a few. This is always one of my most favorite presentations. I do agree with my colleagues here. The videos were tremendous. I especially enjoyed watching the elementary school with the interactive posters. That was a real cahoot, as they say. Can you elaborate for me, not necessarily for me, but for everybody that may watch this board meeting, what are the security measures currently that are in place when a student takes a Google Chromebook home? I think there's some question as to they're getting on their home Wi-Fi and thus they have full access to the internet, and I know that not to be true, but I was hoping you could please elaborate a little bit on that. And also, are there any limitations in the sense of time restrictions when or how long the students can use, or are there any thoughts on that? I'll let you kind of elaborate on that question.
Yeah, the filtering that we have in place applies whether the device is here in our school or whether it is taken home. So the same filtering program is in place, and the sites that are blocked, we use an educational tool through Erie One BOCs for that, and so that, and it's also being used by many school districts. We're not the only one using that tool. So that is in place. And regarding the amount of screen time, there are no limits at this point on that. And we have thought about and did some questioning on our end, what would take to do something like that, and it's not an easy solution. So, you know, therein lies the question about, you know, going to a cart model.
Okay. Thank you. Next question regarding security. Firewalls are great, but the new number one way to get past a firewall is what we've just saw down in the, last week in Florida with the breach of the president's, I want to say palace, malware. It's easy to get malware into our network. So what are our responses? What are we doing now? I know email obviously is one of the main concerns, phishing attacks and that sort of nature, but USB drives, thumb drives that could But USB drives, thumb drives, that could have that on there, very easily could expose the network. What are we doing in that sense?
Well, when it comes to malware, again, we have upgraded, I would say, to a different software program. And this is also through Erie One Bowsies. Before this, we were going to a good program, but it was through a private vendor. The difference is that this program allows us with the cost and the ability to put it on every single computer. So, therefore, rather than the other one, which we were limited by licenses, and we had to move those licenses around to district computers. And what we normally did is we put them in what we would call high-volume areas, like computer labs, libraries, areas like that, where we could then track and see what was going on. The, the new software allows it to go on all our computers. And, and that's an important upgrade than what we had in the past. So, that would really be the number-one thing that we've done in the last, really, nine months when it comes to that type of software. And regarding the malware and that, I'd say the best thing that we're doing right now is, number-one, educating. It, it may sound, we did a lot of research even over the last few weeks and industry-type publications, which I know you're aware of. Many of them say that education is the way to go. When we did our, we're having, you know, our cyber audits, as I mentioned, they do malware. They look at our systems and they say, "How can you be exposed? What do you need to change?" And they provide us those, that type of information so that we try and limit the loopholes. We don't really want people to bring in their own USB drives. I think the reality is, we can't prevent that either. So, it's something that, when it shows up on a particular computer, that it will be flagged by our system. At the same time, you know, we do everything we can to make sure that the system, by, by, you know, doing our normal maintenance checks and so forth, that we don't have any aberrations in, in what we would see as processing speed and program accessibility. So, we try and do all that with, you know, with the tools we have. And we're always looking, again, to try and see what more we can do, what, what we can do to improve.
Right. Education, number-one defense. I appreciate you stating that. It really is, so I, I'm happy to hear that we're, we're working on that. Great, thank you, guys, and thanks for taking the time and putting this presentation together.
Thank you.
Would someone like to make a motion to resolve to approve the memorandum of agreement for the Transportation Department as presented? Mr. Borenstein, is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis. Before I open this up into public discussion, Dr. Markslaw, would you like to please give us some background and bring us up to speed on this issue?
Yes, Mr. Lemay, this is an item that we have talked to the Transportation Department leaders for the last number of months. We have, over the years, seen a decrease in the number of district drivers for our Transportation Department from, you know, about seventy or eighty at one juncture in time, down to a current level of about twenty drivers. So, we decided to explore this with this memorandum of agreement as a way to provide severance payment by moving our operation to completely private transportation services at the conclusion of the school year.
Okay, discussion on this.
If I'm, if I may, Sean.
Mr. Meyer, please.
So, ultimately, tonight, this motion's followed by another motion to terminate the positions. And for me, what this really is, is tonight we're being asked to kill a union, kill a bargaining unit of dedicated district employees. To me, that just doesn't make sense. I do not believe that's good for the district. So, I will vote no. But moreover, without getting to all the points that I have to say on this subject, I am concerned about the process and procedure we're following tonight, particularly because the bargaining unit has not approved this yet. I have several questions for our board attorney. It's my understanding that perhaps others do as well. I think it's very dangerous to proceed without having those questions answered. And therefore, I move to table the current motion.
Okay. Second? Second? So, there's a motion on the, the table to, table the motion. Discussion on that specific request? Mrs. Beaker.
Regarding tabling this motion, well, I'll express my opinion on, we'll just talk about tabling the motion right now. I've seen correspondence from the union leader asking us to put this motion to a vote tonight. And I think that that's important to consider when we're talking about whether or not to table this. I think that, I personally feel that we should be listening and respecting the union leadership on this issue, regardless of our personal feelings about it. And so, that's why I feel that we should not table this issue, though I do respect and appreciate your points about procedure. But I don't know if that will ultimately change the outcome of the approval of the MOA or the following motion regarding the position. So, that's what I'd like to share about ta- my thoughts on tabling this tonight.
Okay, other discussion regarding tabling the motion? Mrs. Van Seis?
And I would just like to reiterate that, in the sake of being transparent, I just feel like, you know, it sounds like, here we are, we haven't sought out our lea- you know, our attorney with legal advice or seen anything. We have heard from union leadership on this. We also have sought out guidance by our attorney. So, I am in agreement not to table it because I feel confident that we looked into this matter and have been advised.
Thank you. Any other comments regarding tabling? Mr. Mecca?
I do not think we should vote on this at this time as our board attorney is not present and I have concerns about us approving this. I also want to be clear that I'm not in favor of the board eliminating these positions. If a vote is called for on this memorandum, I will abstain, as I would like to have spoken face-to-face with the board's counsel in executive session prior to this vote. I have two main concerns. I am concerned about us approving this before CSEA membership has approved the agreement, especially in light of emails that were sent by our attorney referencing this topic. I am also concerned about approving the longevity payments before eliminating the positions. If we approve the longevity payments but do not eliminate the positions, then what? I believe we could be obligated to make these payments, and this could be considered a gift to public funds. I would like to clarify these issues with our attorney in a face-to-face dialogue before agreeing to this memorandum. Therefore, I am in favor of tabling this motion.
Other comments on tabling this motion? Okay, Dr. Vannator?
Thank you, Mr. Lemay. I am also in favor of tabling this motion. I, for one, am not in favor of eliminating these positions. And I also believe, I would like to hear from our legal counsel regarding the fact that we are following appropriate procedures, and I would like confirmation of that. Thank you.
Without any other comments, I will call for a vote. All in favor for tabling the motion, please raise your hand at this time. Three in approval. All against tabling the motion, please raise your hands. Six, motion is defeated, three to six. Back to the original motion on the table to approve the memorandum of agreement for the Transportation Department as presented. Is there any further discussion?
Sure, if I can chime back in at this point, Sean, thank you.
Mr. Meyer?
All right, as I started off a moment ago, I feel ultimately this is a question of whether we kill a union, a bargaining unit of dedicated district employees, people who live here, people who have children in the district. We have never bothered, even bothered, to try and negotiate a contract which continues their employment with the district. We moved pretty much straight to the question of terminating them. I don't feel that's fair to their years of dedicated hard work, nor do I think it's a significant cost to this district to continue their employment. In my mind, there's a big difference between saying thanks to people and showing thanks. And I think you show thanks by allowing them to continue their jobs with this district. I also don't think it's good for the district. Once we contract this out to an outside vendor, they gain all leverage because they own essentially a hundred percent of our bus routes. It becomes their contract. And the research that I've seen from other districts, in particular, some research coming out of Pennsylvania where they've done this heavily, this privatization of this, is that after the contract expires with that outside vendor, they jack the prices up and all the savings you thought you were going disintegrate, they disappear. And I'm not convinced, with the very limited savings that we get from this, that that's not going to happen. I'm convinced that it will. I also think that maintaining our own transportation unit gives us some flexibility in terms of being able to bus our students to different events, perhaps on an on-call basis. You just, you don't know how you're going to use your transportation services. So, it sits really wrong with me to do this to district employees. I think it's kind of like a sugar-coated death pill in a way because, yes, you are compensating them through severance. But I know overwhelmingly that they would much prefer to continue their employment with this district. I believe the savings is somewhere around $500,000 a year. That's putting aside the savings of selling the buses. That's just in terms of compensation for the, the bussers. But that equates to, in my mind, somewhere ballpark around a quarter of one percent of our budget. Because we have a budget of nearly $200 million. So, I am going to vote no on this tonight, and I'm going to vote no on the next one. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion? Dr. Markslaw, a question for you on this. Can you go over what the district is going to be saving regarding moving forward on these two propositions? As well as, can you talk about what percentage we currently already outsource of our transportation?
So, in terms of savings from the independent study we had done, we've been told a conclusion of at least a half million dollars based on going to the private provider to answer Mr. Meyer's question about what happens at the end of the contract with the private provider. Normally, what you would do, and what we've done in the past as well, is you do a request for proposals. And you would sort of bid out the work and let other companies come in and provide competition to our, our current provider. So, there would be those savings. There would also be a savings from selling the district's current fleet of buses. And there would be some opportunity for savings or revenue if we were to lease out the current transportation facility to another interested party. So, that would be a part of the equation as well.
And what percentage do we already outsource our transportation? Do you know off the top of your head, rough percentage?
Say between fifteen and twenty percent. Does that sound right, Mr. Maturski? Fourteen percent.
Okay. Okay. Can't think of any other questions, thank you. Mr. Mecca?
Could you repeat what the fourteen percent was?
Fourteen percent of the transportation operation is completed by current district drivers.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks for the clarification.
Thank you.
No, the, the private contractors do eighty-six percent of the current transportation.
How long have we been outsourcing roughly a, a majority of our transportation?
Mr. Maturski, you want to address that one? I know there was discussions about twenty years ago about doing a new transportation facility over on the district's property, or former property on Campbell Boulevard, that it was determined that it wasn't going to be financially feasible to complete. And I think that was a particular point in time where we began to privatize more.
That's correct. I know that the initial contract that we redid was thirty years old. It was from 1979, and there was very likely a prior contract to that. But so minimally, it was at least from 1979.
Thank you. Any further questions? Dr. Vannator?
Yes, Mr. Lemay, just, just for clarity, so the resolution is to eliminate positions of head bus driver, bus drivers, and transportation mechanics.
No.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My apologies.
No, no problem.
I had it myself.
That's okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, I just want to state for the record that while I am voting no on this, it's not a matter of whether I think they're, they deserve this money. I believe they do. I believe they deserve more than that, and I believe they deserve their jobs. But I cannot vote to terminate their positions, and this MOA is a, a piece of that. So, I, that's why I'm voting no.
Okay. Dr. Vannator?
I would just like to clarify, I'm going to be voting no on this because I'm voting no to eliminate, not, not eliminate the positions. I'll be voting no on that as well. So, by rationale, while I certainly would like to see them receive the severance, my hope is that we do not, in fact, eliminate the positions. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All in favor, please raise your hand. That is six, all opposed. Raise your hands, please. Abstaining. Motion carries six to one. The next resolution, would someone like to make a, to resolve to approve the resolution to eliminate positions of head bus driver, bus drivers, and transportation mechanics as presented?
Just, Sean, one, one question, if I may, since I was asking that earlier, and we said we were going to wait for this. Just for frame of reference for folks sitting in the audience, can you give us the number of people this vote will be?
Let's open the motion, and then we can go to discussion afterwards. So, motion, please. Mrs. Leatherbarrow, is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis, now discussion. Dr. Vannator?
Thank you. I have to follow my appropriate procedures. Can you just refresh our memory, please? We're talking about eliminating positions of head bus driver, bus drivers, and transportation mechanics. What's, what is that? We outsource fourteen percent of our services. How many individuals is that, please?
Dr. Markslaw?
We do not outsource fourteen percent of our services. We outsource eighty-six percent of our.
I'm, I'm sorry, I flipped it. Sorry. Fourteen percent is what we are, are voting on essentially right now.
Correct.
And so, just for clarity for me, how many folks' positions is this vote to, to eliminate, please?
Mr. Maturski, you want to comment on that, please?
There are two mechanics, two head bus drivers, and twenty-one drivers.
Thank you.
Other questions? Discussion, comments? Mr. Mecca?
Thanks. Over the past few months, we have heard from many bus drivers who are employed, who are employees of our district, who have clearly indicated that they love their jobs, have served faithfully in their roles, and wish to continue their employment with the district. I want them to know that their stories have resonated with me. I appreciate your service. They say actions speak louder than words. I plan to go beyond lip service and vote against this elimination of positions. I will do this because I think the board is taking the wrong action in dismissing these positions. I don't want to provide a severance package. I want to continue to provide meaningful employment to these dedicated drivers and mechanics. Many of these employees live in our community and earn far too little money for the awesome responsibility of safely transporting our children to and from school every day. I urge my fellow board members to join me in rejecting this proposal and get cracking on negotiating a replacement contract.
Any other comments? Mrs. Van Seis?
I just, I don't want to speak about too many details, but what I am happy to know is that we, as a district, are providing a severance package and so that the community knows there are other opportunities that are being provided so that it does not sound like they're being killed or nothing's being offered. I'll just leave it at that. There is more to the story.
Markslaw, would you mind elaborating on that a little bit? Have there been discussions with, with our current busing company regarding the employment of any of these individuals?
Oh, there have been. They have promised jobs, and they have promised that our current drivers could keep their current routes working for them. They have talked about some salary information and some bonus information and some benefit information that they would provide all of our drivers. Certainly, we don't want to see anyone without a job or to be unemployed. At the same time, we do want to do what we can to honor their tremendous commitment over many years to our school district and to safely transporting our students. And that is why we are providing the compensation that is detailed in the MOA.
Mr. Mecca?
I, I know that we've had discussions around the bus driver. I know that we've had discussions around the bus drivers continuing their employment with Student Transportation of America. Is, does the same hold true for the mechanics?
Yes, it does hold true. That is not in our agreement with our transportation CSEA union, because we can't go into a legal agreement based on what a third party is supposed to do, but we have every reason to believe that they would do that.
Mrs. Beeger?
Over the past few months, we've received correspondence from people who will be impacted by this vote. We've also had people come to the microphone to speak on it, and I've been very touched and moved by both sides of this. In particular, the class that people have brought to the microphone in discussing this, and the points that they've made, have resonated very deeply with me. I personally am opposed to eliminating these positions based on several factors, but I also have sat through several budget presentations over the last few months and seen the difference in the kind of state aid we're getting, seeing in order to continue programming and continue to keep the amount of personnel that we have. And we're not making great additions to our budget. We're trying very hard to keep our programming as is without raising taxes too much. And so I understand our fiscal responsibility as well. So I respect and appreciate difference of opinion on this, but I personally am opposed to eliminating these positions.
I'd just like to, I'm sorry. No, go ahead, Susan. You raised your hand first.
Dr. McClary, please.
I was just going to echo what Mrs. Beeger is saying, that we are faced with the difficult decisions of being fiscally responsible for our budget, and sometimes, and I know I want to make it sound trite, but there's always hard decisions in what has to happen in order to keep a budget that works for the district. And so, yes, it is difficult to carry this on, and we, I'm sorry, I do not want to create the impression at all that this is done lightly, or that we have not been grateful to hear from the current people who have come to the podium, but it's in fiscal responsibility. Thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
First of all, I want to say thank you to those individuals who we are terminating tonight through their contract for their service to the district. As you can tell, I mean, I've seen you sitting here month after month, and I've seen some letters and have you come to the podium. This has been a drawn-out process, and it's been a difficult decision. It's a lot of spirited discussion has taken place. Also, a lot of very thoughtful and mindful discussion on the part of all nine board members that you see up here tonight. There's absolutely no joy in my vote tonight. However, my vote must promote the mission of our district and keep the focus on student achievement. When I think about this past year, I've had the opportunity to visit most of the school visits that have occurred this year. In visit after visit, we hear asks from teachers crying out for more mental health support. And in this budget that we are going to be putting forth for, to the public, to our proposed budget, we were unable to provide any of those. There were other asks. GT, Gifted and Talented, was a topic of, at the community forum. There's nothing in our budget this year that can promote that either. And so, as difficult of a decision as this is, I have to cast my vote, being mindful of the mission of the district and promoting that mission with the focus on student achievement and their wellness. And I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, comments?
Yes, first, let me just preface it by saying, one, I respect each and every board member. I also respect their opinions. I know that we have disagreements, and this is one of those items where I vehemently disagree. But I want to respond to three items that were brought up by various members. First one, with respect to this third party that's out there that says they will employ them, transportation, Student Transportation, I believe is the name of the company. Is that correct? Yeah. So I don't view that as offering anything on equal footing with their current job. They are losing their union. They are losing their bargaining unit. They're losing their bargaining power. They will be paid less. At least, this is my assumption, based on what I've seen thus far. They will be paid less. They will receive less benefits. And also, there really is no guarantee that they'll have those jobs, because this is a third party. They're a private corporation, and they can do or not do whatever they want. So we definitely can't promise anything. They can't promise anything. Two, with respect to fiscal responsibility, I go back to the numbers as a percent of our budget. And this is not a strict number, but the ballpark figure that I've worked out in my mind is, we're talking about a quarter of 1% of our entire budget. We have a budget of $200 million, almost. We can continue their employment. We could do it. And then lastly, with respect to the mission of student achievement and wellness, which Teresa brought up, which is a very good point, and I respect her opinion on this, but I also believe that everyone plays a part of that. And I believe Teresa believes that as well. I'm not saying she said otherwise, but I think the transportation personnel, especially just listening to their stories, I get a sense that they play an important part of the lives of every student that gets on their bus. So I don't, I just don't share the view that you're doing a disservice to the mission by continuing their employment with the district. That's not to put words in anyone's mouth. That's just me speaking organically how I feel. Thank you.
Other comments, concerns, questions?
Call or vote.
Thank you. I will add my comments to this. I do want to say thank you to the transportation unit, the division. They've put a lot of years of hard work in, and this is a difficult decision for any board member here to make. This is probably one of the most difficult decisions I've had to make since being on the board. This is a financial decision, and I do disagree with my colleague here at the board, regardless if this is 25% of the budget or 1/10th of the budget, 1 1/10th of the budget. $500,000 is a lot of taxpayer dollars, and to arbitrarily decide that we can continue to fund that money when we could put that towards, you know, improvements to programs, teachers, or other areas of the district. I find that it's part of my duty as an elected official on the board that I have to look at penny-pinching every single dollar that we spend. It is, as I said, a very difficult decision for myself and for every board member here, I'm sure. I can't comment on the pay, but I can comment that, you know, the STA, the Student Transportation of America, has assured the board that they will offer these positions to these individuals, and they will offer them their existing bus routes. And I feel, at least in my eyes, that that is a major plus to this battle. I realize the $500,000 is always difficult in removing of jobs and shuffling them, but I feel much more at ease knowing that all 25 of these people have been offered or will be offered jobs and the opportunity to keep their existing bus routes if they so deem. So without any further ado on this, I will call the vote on this. All in favor, please raise your hand. Six. All opposed? Four. Motion carries six to four.
Five.
Excuse me, five to four. I can count. I appreciate that. Dr. Marksov, would you like to review the code of conduct for us?
Yes, it is in your packet. And before I go into too much detail, it has been reviewed by Mr. Scanzuzzo and his committee. I'll open it up to the board for questions about the code of conduct.
You want to go first?
Okay, why don't you pick? Mrs. Beeger, I'm going to pick. Go, please.
I have some questions. It's a very involved document, obviously. I read through this very thoroughly, and we have each year. For me, I read this differently this year, as I have a student now in high school. And as we learn about increasing security threats, one of my questions actually was around dress code. And it sounds really old-fashioned, but one of the things that we had, I had learned in a different training was having hoods up, being a security risk for a couple of reasons. One, you can't tell who it is, so you don't know if it's a student or someone in the building. If there's surveillance, you may not know who the person is in the building. And two, that's one way that kids can conceal if they're vaping, if they have a hood up. Our dress code is very broad. It's not very specific, and I'm not necessarily asking for specific language around hoods in particular. What I'm curious about is, have there been any recent discussions around dress code in our code of conduct relating to safety for our students?
We have had some conversations. There are at least a couple of schools that do look at things like hats and hoods as something that they don't wish to allow. I'd want to have more conversations with, quite frankly, the leadership team and our principals about that, and also conversations with our students and superintendents in our High Advisory Council. Sometimes what we see as things that provide a safer environment, that does not, you know, rationally disrupt the educational environment, may be seen as a large imposition by growing teenagers who sometimes want to express their individuality or independence. I don't know if you have teenagers like that, maybe, maybe not. I think it kind of comes with the age sometimes. But at any rate, we'd want to have more discussions around that particular topic with our principals, because there's also the issue of consistency. Why should the dress code be different at South High School than it is at East or at North? And talk about that. So we, if we are going to be inconsistent, that could be an option, but there should be a rationale logic for why that is.
Thank you for that reply, and I just want to follow up by saying I really like the idea of involving students in that conversation. I don't bring it up to say, let's dictate and put our kids in uniform, or say, you know, take away that individuality and how they dress, or even that kids shouldn't wear hoodies, because that's not what I'm saying either. But I'm curious of student thoughts around the dress code, parent thoughts around dress code. And in particular, I was just thinking of little things like that, of not wearing a hoodie, but like a hood over your head, and what that could do as far as a security risk for surveillance if there is.
I've had conversations with one student in particular about that very topic of wearing a hoodie or not wearing a hoodie in school. You know, they have their own ideas of what that means for them.
Yeah. I'm not in any way proposing that kids can't wear hoods. My child wears one every day. But I think, I am hoping maybe we can open up discussion just in general and even involve students in that, and maybe it's a moot point, but I think it's something worth throwing out to those parties that discuss these things, and particularly involving student voice within.
Some of those conversations should probably take place, quite frankly, at the school level.
Yep, yes.
Instead of a district-wide input of, you know, what's going on here at Casey Middle School, or at High Middle School, or wherever, whichever school it is.
Okay. Mrs. Van Seis?
And I agree with that, and I like bringing that to the leadership team and really administration of the schools, and hearing student voice. I can almost guarantee you what the students are going to say. I have a student who thought I was crazy that I even mentioned it. However, as I usually do before I request something that I think is important, I've reached out to several school districts, and hats and hoods are not allowed in many schools. I'm not going to talk about the chivalry and respect portion, because dress code can only be about safety and security. So with that, I would, I would like to hear that our district is going to discuss it. We don't have hats and hoods being worn at the middle school. I think as high schoolers, sure, they want to express themselves, but I do also believe having guidelines are sometimes what kids are missing and almost need many times. We're already giving them the one-to-one device. I just, due to the safety and security, I work in a high school, I would just like to know that our district can continue with these conversations. I do believe this is something that, you know, is important, and then come back and hear what district leadership, administration, and students, you know, their input as well.
Besides hats and hoodies, are there any other dress code items you'd like to see discussed or further explored?
I'm trying to find somewhere in the document where it says any minimum clothing that needs to be worn. I can't find something in here that says I have to have shoes on my feet and a shirt on.
Because those things would not be reflected in the code of conduct. They're already spoken to in the law, that if you do something that could reasonably upset the educational process, that's not something that you can do.
Got it.
Or go without wearing.
Mr. Bornstein?
Well, hang on. Would it hurt to just repeat that portion of the law in the code of conduct?
It could.
Thank you.
Mr. Bornstein?
Thank you. We are blessed to live in a very enlightened community, and so it's when I hear some things about racist taunts between students, it's very disturbing. And in fact, just recently, a new friend of mine reported that his daughter was called a disgusting word. And just out of the earshot of an adult, I'm wondering if this family has any recourse when their child is abused in this way by another student.
I would encourage that family to contact the principal of the school.
Uh huh.
So that it can be looked into, reviewed, investigated, and determined what exactly happened. If it happened as you described, then there should be a severe disciplinary consequence that's imposed as a result of that.
Thank you, and I'm glad that there's that kind of interest in this. I suspect that they won't take it anywhere, because in their community, you just absorb that negativity and you move on. Anyway, I just wanted to bring it to your attention, just to make sure you knew that some disturbing things happen between students.
Do they not live in Williamsville?
They live in Williamsville, and their students and their, their daughter, who was abused by a fellow student verbally, goes to Williamsville School District. I'm not sure which school she goes to.
Okay.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow, and I'm going to guess you may have discovered here, but while Mr. Bornstein was speaking, the dress code is section five. It starts on page 16. And while it's not specific, specific, it does specifically ban quite a.
Nudity.
Not necessarily, well, sexual content, so I guess we could kind of pile that into that category of sexual nature, you know, things of illegal tobacco, religious, political, stuff like that are in the code of conduct specifically, so.
Yeah, that wasn't what I was referring.
Yeah, no, I.
Shirts.
Talking about wearing clothes.
It's not.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Shirts and spaghetti straps and that's.
And I agree with your thought that, you know, maybe there should be some addition to something along those lines put in here, or certainly unified between the schools. Yes, go ahead.
So personally, I do find this code of conduct to be unclear. From a teacher perspective, it's really important. From a teacher perspective, it's really important that students understand the consequences for their actions. I see a lot of will not be tolerated, but I, it's, it's not very clear. For example, if I run in the hallway versus punch somebody in the head in the cafeteria, what the consequence is going to be. I'm not suggesting or recommending that we make those changes though this round. I'm very excited about the strategic planning that's going to be happening and I understand that it's going to involve a lot of stakeholders across our community. And I feel personally that it would be important to let that process take place where we identify our core beliefs as a district, revise our mission, values, all of those things. And when that is in place, then go back and develop a Code of Conduct that is in line with that new process. To me, that makes more sense and it, and it speaks to what you were saying, Mary, about making sure we're making these decisions from the bottom up instead of from the top down. Although I do think the kids should be wearing clothes to school. All right, thank you.
Other comments?
I would just say that I parrot what Teresa just said and I agree.
I wonder if your nudity falls under Section 5, subsection 3, where it requires participation in activities, clothing, jewelry, maybe a safety or health concern?
Yes.
I think that's probably where that would fall, but yeah.
Yes.
It's still pretty vague. Any other comments, questions?
Oh, one other thing. We recently, I believe, changed the consequence if there is e-cigarette brought to school. Is that reflective in here, the consequence specifically for that? Because I'm not, I'm not seeing that.
I, well, uh, well, I gotta search that again.
If you're on page eighteen, it does just talk about jewel and similar devices. It falls under unauthorized substance.
Right. The specific consequence.
Yeah.
Being a minimum, you know, minimum, was it three or five?
Three.
Three-day suspension? If that's going to be the policy and that's going to be universal across the district, then I feel personally that that should be part of the Code of Conduct. However, if you start doing that for that, then it opens up the can of worms of, well, what about hazing or what about bullying or what about harassment and going down the line, including running in the hallways, which, I'm sorry, that's funny that that's there. So I don't know that we want to do that. However, it is a policy, so we should maybe think about it. If it's a policy, why isn't it part of the Code of Conduct?
I think to say it's a policy is too strong of a description.
Thank you.
It's more like a regulation or a way of doing business, if you will. So keep in mind, there's regulations that back all these things up that talk in greater detail of what we do and how we do it. Mr. Skanzuzo, do you wanna mention anything about jewel use or possession in the response from the district?
Just that, I mean, the practice is, is consistent among the schools and the individual investigations involving students varies. And to just put something in, in black and white that may, there's always instances that happen that, that you can never fathom, that you couldn't prepare for in writing. So having said that, I think if you put that in writing, then you're, you're bound by it. And I think that if there's a certain circumstance that may arise, whatever that may be, if a parent comes in with, with, an attorney present to poke a hole or to find something that, that vehemently is against what's currently written, I think that that opens us up to a situation where we, we have the flexibility of, of providing our consequences in a consistent manner. And I think that, you know, our building administrations are aware of that. When our leadership team, we have those frequent discussions. So having said that, I'm not sure that putting, you know, if this happens, then this is the consequence in writing is something that we may, may wanna do. As Dr. Martzoff said, the regulations are already there. Not sure they need to be explicitly stated in the Code of Conduct.
Mr. Meca?
Thanks. I'm familiar with one district that has a Code of Conduct that is very prescriptive. And I think it's too limiting. And I, I like, from the first time I saw the Code of Conduct here, I liked the fact that it wasn't prescriptive in that way. And I just wanna state my preference to keep it that way because I think some board members are speaking of making it more prescriptive. I think everything has to be done on a case-by-case basis pending the circumstances surrounding the issue.
Mrs. Van Sis.
And I, I agree about the consequences. I think that's a really fine line. To put it in black and white, I don't think we would find any legal advice telling us to do that as well. You're opening yourself up for a lot more. And I don't think at the board level, we should be monitoring that. I, I like what you said, as long as there's consistency with building administration. And I'm talking APs with principals and that discussion's going on and that's taking place. That is what I would like. And even with dress code, you know, we're talking about one situation of dress code. I would again stay away from the dress code being specific because I come from a school that has a specific dress code. It's not implemented. You now have created a whole mess because the teachers or the principal goes on and states, this is not allowed? You can't control that unless you send thirteen hundred students home to go and change their clothes. And guess who's not gonna be happy? Mom and dad. So inappropriate is one thing. Teachers just need to, if it's inappropriate, I have, you know, you have discussions. That's not appropriate, we need to do, you know. But I think by putting it in a document by the district, we, that would not be even recommended. I'm, I'm thinking by the leadership team, Dr. Martzoff, or any lawyer.
And just to clarify, these recommendations came from a fresh set of eyes from new legal counsel that are representing us to take a look at this document and just to kinda see where, you know, where it matches up to the other seventy districts that they're representing and just updating it. And the fact that they added definitions, I think, makes it easier to follow. There's a better understanding of terms that are, that are referred to and referenced in the Code of Conduct that now parents and, and students can roll, can, can go back and actually see exactly what those terms mean and how they're referenced in the Code of Conduct. So I think those additions are a welcome addition.
Mrs. Beeger.
Mr. Skanzuzo, I appreciate that frame of reference because knowing that there's been a recent legal review that, you know, resulted in these changes and also the understanding that there are some regulations that back these things up and that's not where this lives, that helps me to better understand. Please note for the record that I'm not stating that we should add don't wear hoods in this. That's not what I meant at all. I just wondered if situations like that were part of the conversation when considering revising these, you know, updated recommendations or things that we got. But that makes a great deal of sense to me. So thank you for sharing that. That clears up some of the confusion that I had around there not being specific. You know, you did this, you get this. That makes sense to me. Thank you.
Speaker, were you concerned that you're gonna have a full revolt when you get home tonight?
Yes, actually, yes. And I can't afford, like, that's his wardrobe. But yes.
I saw the board loaded it down.
Any other questions or comments? Mrs. Lutherboro.
I would like to see if there's data regarding, like, around the VADA reports, if the board would be able to see that before we have to vote to approve this Code of Conduct next month.
We normally do the report on incidents and numbers of suspensions and in-school suspensions and things like that in the summer at the end of the year. So the, the board is supposed to approve this at the next meeting. Could we delay it? Yeah, we absolutely could. It's up to the board.
Okay, we can figure that out when we do agenda planning.
Okay.
Yep, Mr. Meca?
I, I don't feel the necessity of that information prior to the vote, but I think that I would like to see that information as well.
Dr. Martzoff, we got that report last summer too, didn't we?
We did. It wasn't quite in the format we would have liked, but Mr. Skanzuzo is gonna work closely with folks in technology and who work with WITS to provide us with a new school-by-school report for later.
First year, we got that report last year, right? Okay, good, so we can work on approving on that.
Mm-hmm.
And just for the record, I'm not point, I'm not making a case for the Code of Conduct to be more prescriptive as, as you were saying. I, we were from similar districts, so I know what he's referring to. I just want to be sure that I'm approving a Code of Conduct that meets the needs of our district. In, in order to do that, I need to see data to show what our discipline issues are. I hear word of mouth when we visit schools that we need more mental health people to deal with behaviors. But what does that actually mean in terms of the incidences that are happening in our classrooms? Because that can mean different things to different people, especially when you're considering perspective. My perspective in urban teaching, urban teaching about what is an emergency situation might be different than what is happening here. And it may not be.
And I agree, and certainly to know the trends too, which I think is something we'll be building over time. I'm not sure how much of that data we have access to, but. Any other questions or comments on this from the board? Okay, at this point, I'd like to hold a public forum on the Code of Conduct. If anyone in the audience would like to address the board about the Code of Conduct, if so, please come to the podium, sign in, state your name and full address, please. I would like to conclude the public forum on the Code of Conduct at this time. Thank you. And we'll come back to this again next month. Moving on to finance. Dr. Martzoff, would you like to review the budget and property tax report with us, please?
Sure. I have a presentation that may look vaguely familiar to the Board of Education because it almost is, well, it might be exactly the same as the presentation we've previously shared with the board, and I'll explain why as we go through the presentation. First of all, again, our planning priorities for the nineteen twenty proposed budget is to preserve academic and extracurricular programming for students, a fiscally responsible budget that taxpayers can support, and to prioritize expense reductions and maximize potential savings, particularly those that are away from the classroom. So looking at our expenses going into next year, we have a salary increase of almost three point six million dollars. Social Security, four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Health insurance and BOSI services, four hundred thousand dollars each. And contract services and supplies of four hundred and fifty thousand for an increase of almost five point three million dollars. Same time, a couple of items that we are looking to move forward with. One is for teaching Mandarin Chinese at the high school level. This would provide us with a teacher that would be shared between our three high schools to teach this new elective course. The way this came about is it was offered in the course description book and students signed up by indicating their interest in taking this course. And then the administration, just to remind the board, we want to enhance administrative support, particularly at the elementary schools, by transitioning half-time administrative positions to full-time administrative positions at that level. So when you add these up, it adds up to five million, five hundred and twenty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty-two dollars as a budget-to-budget increase. We need to make some expense reductions and we're proposing to do those in the area of utilities of seventy-five thousand. The TRS system, due to a rate reduction, we will save four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Teacher retirements, five hundred thousand dollars. Facility repair reserve, computer supplies and legal expenses are also all going down for a total of one million, one hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and thirteen dollars. And when you subtract that from the previous slide of five and a half million, you get to an increase of four million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars. That's a two point two nine percent budget-to-budget increase in our, in our school spending plan. Our proposed budget has to take a look at the New York State tax cap. Our tax cap calculation this year is three point one eight percent. So we have calculated our levy increase at three point one five percent, which is under the tax cap by about thirty-six thousand dollars and would provide additional revenue to the district. So what does our revenue look like overall? We're looking to add three point eight seven five million dollars on the tax levy side, state aid of three hundred and sixty-three thousand, four hundred and ninety-one dollars, and I shared with the board at our last meeting. We would see if that number changed with the final budget approval at the New York State level. That number may go up by about thirty thousand dollars. But it's really not anything where you could give strong consideration to adding a program or spending that, those dollars in any significant way. Other revenue going up a little over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So all in all, our, our revenue is slated to go up by four million, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars, which happens to be our expense increase. So the budget-to-budget increase is two point two nine percent. Our estimated tax levy increase is three point one five percent, which is below the New York State tax cap. And our estimated tax increase, tax rate increase is two point three five percent. That's a difficult one to predict. We won't know that number until later in the summer, but we wanted to share with the board where we are. Our proposed budget maintains current, current levels of instructional and extracurricular programming for students, maintains physical, mental and emotional well-being of students at all levels, introduces Mandarin Chinese as a new high school load elective, continues to offer expansive AP course selection and support university and college partnerships, more classroom supply funds that will reduce extra costs for parents. It supports the second year of our three-year plan to strengthen administrative support at the elementary level, continues to support a high-level professional development for all teachers and staff members, and it keeps the tax levy increase below the New York State tax cap. What's the estimated impact on homeowners for an assessed value of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars of basic star subsidy, which increased by forty-six dollars and forty-six cents, and in the enhanced star subsidy, thirty-one dollars and one cent? What have we looked like over the last five to six years? We have been pretty consistent in terms of our budget-to-budget increase, our tax levy increase and what that does with our tax rate. For our timeline, this evening, hopefully you will agree to adopt the two thousand nineteen twenty proposed budget. On May ninth, we will have our annual budget hearing. We'll present this budget yet again. And we will have our PTSA School Board Candidates Night, where we will hear from all candidates running to be members of the Board of Education. And then on May twenty-first, we invite everyone to come out to vote at our annual budget vote and school board election at North High School. On the ballot will be the proposed budget, yes or no? The number two item will be the two thousand nineteen capital reserve fund proposition to allow the district to save money in a capital reserve fund for future projects. And then, of course, the school board election to vote for three individuals for that. And the vote will take place from seven AM to nine PM at Williamsville North High School. That concludes the presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions from anyone on the board.
Questions, comments? Mrs. Beeger.
No questions, just a comment that I'm disappointed that our state aid is not higher. I know that we had hoped and advocated for more money coming from the state and that some districts saw some increases. Our district did not see great increases and it's disappointing that our state is not funding public education to a greater extent. So that's disappointing, but it's a great presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Meca?
A follow-up comment to Mrs. Beeger. Let's remember November.
Uh, other comments, questions? Mr. Bornstein?
Just a comment. I went to my first-ever State of the Village address by the mayor and the trustees of the Village of Williamsville. And in their presentation, they referenced a new collaboration with the Williamsville School District on utility savings. And I'm wondering if that is reflected in that seventy-five thousand dollar utility savings that are the expense reductions that are in this presentation?
Mr. Maturzki, care to comment on that?
Yeah, we are, the board actually approved us joining the school municipal SMAC, Environment and, I don't know the other word now, but they're, they're gonna be working with Erie County, or not Erie County, but Erie when BOSI. not Erie County, but Erie One BOSIs.
Yes.
And so that will allow us to have some additional savings. Yes, we're hoping for that.
That's good. It was good to hear about the collaboration that's going on between these important entities in my world anyways. Thank you.
Mrs. Van Seis?
Just one question. I know I'm kind of jumping ahead by assuming we're going to approve this, but in what ways will the district be sharing out this budget information to our community?
Boy. Certainly on our website, via WITS, we've done it in the past. We have a proposed budget book that will become the adopted version that will go out to families and community members. We have a budget community flyer that goes out prior to the budget vote, explaining all the parts of the budget to our community. I present, along with Tom, to our school principals and our administrators, along with any other community group that would like us to come out and present about the budget. We've gone to business groups in the past. We've done it at Community Council, which we just did last week. We've talked to the Williamsville Education Foundation. We try to communicate with a lot of key stakeholders so that they will then, in turn, communicate with their friends and family as well.
Thank you very much. I know educating people in our community about why, you know, we have this tax cap, why we have the budget increase is so valuable and important to get them to truly understand. So all of those ways are absolutely outstanding. Thank you.
Well, Dr. Marslov, will this proposed budget documentation here that was given to us be put on the district's website in electronic form, a PDF or something?
Yes, we can do that.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment.
Yeah, Dr. Meier.
During the last presentation, I had no detailed questions on the budget. Mr. Maturzki, you were kind enough to answer those in excellent fashion. And I just wanted to say that you are a highly skilled individual and a true asset to our district, so thank you very much.
Can we second that?
All in favor? Yes, thank you, Mr. Maturzki. Without any other questions or comments, we'll put this to a vote. All in favor? You know what? I pause. I have not made the motion yet.
Oh, yeah.
My fault. Let's actually make the motion on this. Would someone like to make the motion to resolve, to approve, and adopt the proposed 2019-2020 budget and a property tax report card as presented? Doctor... or excuse me, Mr. Bornstein, and second? Mrs. Beeger, discussion? All in favor? Oh, discussion? Mr. Meyer, second?
I just want to say for the record, I think it should include a budget line for our bussers.
Okay, there you go. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve, to approve the lease agreements for summer use of schools and their fields as presented? Mrs. Van Seis, is there a second? Mr. Bornstein, any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve, to approve, the Erie One BOSI's installment purchase agreement as presented? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, is there a second? Mrs. Van Seis, thank you. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously as well. Can someone make a motion, please, to resolve, to accept and approve the 2018-2019 internal audit information that has been presented in your packet? Mr. Bornstein, a second? Mr. Mecca, any discussion? Yes.
Mr. Maturzki, would you like to introduce our guests on this item, please?
Yes, I introduce Mrs. Kathy Barrett. She is the lead auditor from Freed-Maxick, and she will be reviewing the annual risk assessment that's required by New York State to be completed in school districts of our size, as well as the purchasing department's internal audit for this year. So I'll turn it over to you, Kathy.
Thank you. Good evening. You do have those two documents. They were provided to you in advance of this meeting. The first is the risk assessment. That was performed in December of 2018. In a risk assessment, we look for areas for the district to improve their internal controls and reduce the risk of mistakes, misappropriation, and heaven forbid, fraud. I'm happy to say that our results over the last, not few years, but many years, have been very positive. Any areas that we have of comment or suggestions that we have for improvements, the district has been very proactive in making those changes to reduce your risks. Over the last 18 internal audits, the last years, we've performed 18 internal audits in 12 different control areas. The most recent was in the area of purchasing, purchase cards and cash dispersments. And I'm happy to say that we've had no findings as a result of our testing. So very positive results. And it's always a pleasure working with Tom and his group. Everybody's been very cooperative and very accepting of our recommendations. Any questions on the reports that you had for your review?
Mrs. Beeger?
Well, I don't have a question. It's more of a comment for someone who is not an auditor and tries very hard to understand this, that it's really written in a way that helped me understand, particularly in the review, if there were particular items, it would say, you know, if there was an issue or something, a recommendation, I would make a little note, like this may be a recommendation, and then I'd go further, and it'd say management response, and the district has already enacted the, whatever it is that the suggestion is, which goes back to just the responsiveness of our district. Anything that was noted here is already in the process of being improved upon. So thank you for your thorough work, and also to our district for really taking those things seriously. Our job is to look and overview and see if there's any holes or recommendations or things like that. And this was really, really comforting for me to read. So thank you.
Good. I'm glad you found it easy to understand in review. We tried very hard to make it user-friendly.
You did a good job. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you for your attention. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
I have a question for Mr. Maturzki, though. Would you just explain to, again, to the anybody listening or watching in, what's the difference between an internal audit and external audit?
Sure. An internal audit is there to review the practices and processes we have in place, and it looks at how to improve those so that we reduce the potential for errors, fraud, and items like that. The external audit, on the other hand, is a review of our financial statements. And what they do is they come in each year at the end of the school year. Our school year ends on June 30th. And they review our entries and our statements, and they provide an opinion that says that they are fairly accurate. That's their terminology, and that there are no material omissions or other items in it. So, in other words, that information is then used by bonding companies and such as that to determine that, you know, where our financial status is. That's mainly the difference between those two.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. If anybody has any liaison or conference reports, please make sure you get them to Mrs. Carey. Please let board members know if you're unable to attend a meeting, so that another board member may be able to cover for you. Does anybody need any coverage to any upcoming meetings? Dr. McClary?
If anyone is available on May 14th at 7:00 o'clock in the evening for Country Parkway PTA meeting, I have a conflict with another obligation.
Oh, Mr. Bornstein, thank you.
Thank you. I'll discuss materials later.
Any other conflicts anybody's aware of, they need substitution for? Okay. Are there any legislative matters that anyone would like to discuss this evening? No curriculum... oh, Mr. Mecca?
Remember, in November.
Thank you. No curriculum matters this month, no personnel matters to discuss this month. Let's move on to the district facilities and support. Would someone like to make a motion to resolve, to approve, the Repair Reserve Bid Award Summer 2019 as presented? Mrs. Beeger, thank you. Second? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, is there any discussion? Yes, Mr. Bornstein?
Just a quick question. I'm wondering if, in the bidding process, any weight is given to businesses within our own school district area?
I don't believe we can by law.
Is that for...
Correct.
Yeah? We cannot. Okay, thank you. My understanding...
You're correct.
Oh, you can't. My understanding is it's got to go to the lowest bidder that meets all the terms and conditions, correct? Okay, thank you. Other questions, comments? All in favor? Great. Motion carries unanimously. Special needs, nothing under that tonight. Does anyone have a request or matter to discuss under the committee of the whole? Mr. Mecca?
Thank you. Regarding the special education reports, the Board of Education CSE recap report, I would like to see added some statistics on due process complaints and impartial hearings so that we can understand when parents aren't happy with these services that we're providing or offering through special education. Please discuss.
Can't make a motion in committee of the whole, but if we all agree upon it, we can look into it further.
Or you can suspend the rules, just FYI.
Comments on that? Questions on that?
I mean, can you explain further?
Sure. And sorry that it's out of nowhere. Sometimes my preparation comes up to the last minute of the meeting. But, so when parents are substantially unhappy with what is discussed at the Committee on Special Education table, and there's not agreement with the district and what the district is proposing for services, there are processes in place for them to seek a resolution to their concern. At one point in time, I remember seeing, I think it was in the legal bills, that we have a large number of due process cases. Now, we also have a large district, so, you know, it's hard to say what's a large number for that. But I think it would benefit us to be updated as to the number of due process complaints and impartial hearings that we have, because I think the goal for us would be to reduce these concerns as much as possible. And if we saw a reduction in the number of those complaints, that would be a good indicator for us.
Yes, Mrs.? Mrs. Van Seis, then Mrs. Leatherbarrow.
I did bring this up. This was already, I think, discussed and brought forth. And I believe the district is going to work on providing that. But we just, I was told that, I think all of us were told that, it just will take time to, if we're looking for comparisons, because some things changed. So that report, I believe, will be coming. And I do want to echo you that if you're talking currently what we have or maybe gauging it to come August, September, I think, or even further out, to be able to see, I think, you know, what you're getting at, which is making just a comparison or to see where we're at and how it's going.
Mrs. Leatherbarrow?
My recommendation, Mr. Mecca, too, is just that, and I think it's a fair issue, but when we do agenda planning, perhaps if you would let the board know and give us notice, and that way when we sit down with Dr. Marslov and do agenda planning, we can determine which month would be most appropriate to have that report take place?
Sure. I know nobody likes surprises at the board table, and this is a surprise because I'm bringing it up now. As I was reviewing my packet and read the special education report, I thought to myself it would be a useful statistic to be included in the Board of Education CSE recap report, as it seems to me to be an omission. Not an omission on purpose or anything, I'm not suggesting that, but of the statistics in there, that would be a useful statistic to have. So I'm not throwing it out there to be a surprise to anybody, but I also think that that should be something that's in that monthly report that we receive so that we can see what's happening on a month-to-month basis, not something that would really need to be incorporated into agenda planning and given as a report once. I think this is something that should be done on an ongoing basis, as I think special ed is an area of concern for this board.
I'll just add that I think that's a very reasonable request, Mark, and I support it.
Other comments on that? Dr. Vannator?
I think it's a fair and reasonable request. I think it makes sense. I think benchmarking and having some KPIs, key performance indicators around the performance over time is a good idea, so I'm in support of it.
Other questions, comments on this? Mr. Mecca, I don't have enough information to understand what would be required to put into said report. But on the face of your request, I support it as well. You know, for new cases and those resolved, maybe, or something along those lines on a monthly basis. But again, I don't know the time commitments or whatnot to put into that.
I believe that the district must easily know the number of due process cases that they're currently involved in and impartial hearings that are currently ongoing. I don't think it's a difficult statistic to dig up and will not take much manpower, just from my guess on that issue. Correct me, they can correct me if I'm wrong, I suppose. And it's a very simple statistic. It's a number. It could be a number for impartial hearing, and it could be a number for due process requests. It's not a complicated matter.
We have four positives for it so far, so if one more person's on board with you, we can at least ask the district to look into it and get back to us if it's something they can add to the report and if it's not too burdensome. Mrs. Van Seis is the fifth, so there you go. So, Dr. Marslov, if you wouldn't mind, just look into it and let us know at the board if it's feasible or not. We would appreciate it. Any other items to bring up under Committee of the Whole? Okay, moving on. Now conduct our second public expression. Same rules as outlined in our first public expression will apply. Anyone wishing to address the board should go to the podium and sign in, please, at this time. This will now conclude our second public expression. Thank you for all participating. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss employment matters regarding to a particular person's potential retirement incentives, collective negotiations with transportation union, which I believe we have finished, and negotiations with the assistant superintendents? Mr. Bornstein, is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Would someone like to make a motion to return the regular board meeting to public session, please? Mrs. Leatherbarrow, a second, please. Dr. Vannator, thank you. All in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Tuesday, April 16th, will be a special meeting, the BOSI's Administrative Budget and BOSI's Board Meeting Election. May 9th will be a budget hearing at 6:00 PM, and 7:00 PM will be the PTSA Council's Candidates Night. The annual budget vote will occur on Tuesday, May 21st, and our next regular board meeting will be held on Tuesday, May 28th at 7:00 PM here in District Office. Would someone like to make a motion to adjourn the regular board meeting? Dr. McClary, is there a second? Mrs. Beeger, all in favor? Motion carries unanimously. Have a good night.